So I had, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the Dover Select Board Meeting to order at six thirty P M on Tuesday, June seventeenth. First order of business, public comments. Patrick.
Uh, just as an update to the members of the Select Board and the members of the public here. Uh, from the uh, River Water Task Force, um, we issued uh, about thirty-six hundred surveys to uh, citizens in the town or to our property owners in the town. Uh, so far, as of today, we've gotten um, four hundred and forty, one of them back, that was as of earlier today, I think they're still coming in. It's a pretty good response rate, if you think about it, um. And then I have here, these are the ones that have been returned, these two stacks, I think it's about, let me ask, something like that, around thirty. Um, so it's pretty good, it's in process. We um, ran, an ad in the paper with a Q R code, and we posted Q R codes around town, so we're still getting some responses, and hopefully we'll just keep getting more. And there's no real hard date on this. Um, until we pollate them. Uh, and then we have scheduled coming up in July, a public forum where for the, publish that a lot and answer questions for people in the town, since we want this to be as transparent as possible.
Anybody have any questions of Patrick about the water task force? That's a, what percent response, is that incredible?
That's pretty good.
Yeah.
Um, okay, any other problem comments? There are none. Next, we have additions and additions to the agenda. Uh, Jeanette, who we need to change, add anything you feel aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Anybody else? Okay, Planning Commission, approve appointment of Diane McCormick for the P, from the P C alternate to board member, and Peter McDonald wrote a letter. Uh, due on June sixteenth, dear Select Board members, the Planning Commission voted in executive session to elevate Diane McCormick from an alternate member to of the Planning Commission to a full member. We respectfully request that the Dover Select Board appoint Diane to the full member of the Planning Commission. Thank you in advance for your attention to this matter, Peter McDonald.
I make a motion that we um, appoint Diane McCormick to a full board member position on the Planning Commission.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, she's not, there's a term attached to it, right, isn't it?
It's an alter, well.
No, she's moving from an alternate. I think it's three.
If I have my time before, I think it's a, is it? Five years, animals, you know?
No, it's not, it's not five years, um.
Really?
See, there is, I got it here, um, so there are currently, there's currently an opening, so she's not really replacing anyone. Um, and.
So there's a, there has been an opening?
There has been an opening, mine left, we didn't fill.
When was your term?
Uh.
That gives.
I think my term expired the twenty-six, I think. But I don't recall for sure.
Okay, that's kind of a question, because we usually put the term on it, whether there's a balance of whatever.
Oh, it's, it says here all appointments are for four years term, four year terms except alternate position.
Okay, or.
But we, but is she full, is she a new appointee, or is she full, is she filling out a term, or are we gonna just give her a four year term?
Uh, uh, well, having interacted with her on the Planning Commission, she has been an alternate. I think this is her second stint as an alternate.
Right.
So she joined right around the end of the completion of the town plan, and she's kind of already got a base of knowledge.
Right.
If it's allowable, I will, I would suggest we point her to a full four year term. That is a reasonable talk.
Okay. Peter?
Looking to talk.
I'm here.
Uh, we're just discussing the length of this term. Uh, for Diane.
Whatever, whatever you all decide is, is perfectly fine with us.
Okay, we're gonna make a motion that we approve her for a term and February second, twenty twenty-nine, which would give her a four year term, full four year term.
Uh, just one other note, it's, you cannot vote in executive session, um, and so, uh.
We did, we just didn't wanna talk about her in front of her.
Yeah, and that's fair, but you should come out of executive session and then vote.
Okay.
Okay, just as a rule of, that's how, that's how that works.
That can happen in executive, sir.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
No.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you, Peter.
You're welcome, thank you.
Now, we're gonna consider the public records request draft policy. So, Patrick, worked hard to pull together a public records policy, which is in the, mimics the Vermont Public Records Policy, but is more just geared to the town specifically, so. Do you wanna talk about it?
Talk about it a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, so it, it tracks, it starts with a form proposed by the Vermont League Cities and Towns, uh, that they developed to connect to the State Public Records Policy Act, uh, which is, there's a citation in the document. Basically, it's this, it's to provide for availability of public, public records, um, for inspection and copying within normal business hours of the town. Um, there are some parameters that we avoid disruption to, to the town business operations. Uh, and then there's provision to offset the cost associated above a certain uh, threshold. Um, and, you know, that's at a very high level, I mean, I can jump in, this is, there's a lot more to it than that, but.
And it has a schedule of who is in the custodian of specific records?
Yes, we have to designate custodians of various records, um, and so it's broken down by departments and record categories. And then the cost, um, the state has a schedule of costs, but they also allow towns to establish their own scheduled cost based on the personnel cost and the actual cost within town, so, uh, that's what was used, for example, to develop the, the staff time allocation here with our cost, uh, as budgeted in the um, fiscal year coming up, starting July first. Um, there are some, some that are not included, for example, police departments aren't included, because they have their own statutory schedule of charges. Um, so, you know, whenever you have something like that, that's specifically excluded here.
Dan?
Who's the custodian, how's the custodian picked?
Uh, I actually met with the various members of the town staff and talked to them and interacted with them on multiple occasions to promote them.
I saw this.
Yeah, so then we came up with the custodian, so for example, if it's real property records, well, who's the person that has them? Who's the person that maintains them? If it's payroll records, who maintains them? And, you know, that's how we got to.
Say there's a complaint against that department.
This only has to do.
This is another complaints.
Yeah, this only has to do with public records or plus, it doesn't have to do with complaints. However, if there's, if there's a dispute about a public record and there's a decision on that, then it goes to the Select Board Chair, that's stated in this policy.
Thank you.
And then there's a, there's an additional if you'll be on that, if they, if someone wants.
Right.
You know, that's the next step, yeah.
And it's, it's clearly laid out in this.
Yes.
Yeah. So, we, ha- have the employees all seen this?
Yes.
The people who would be.
The people who are listed here have all seen it, and had a chance to comment.
So to adopt a policy, um, it's gonna last.
Well, this isn't an ordinance.
No, the policy.
Yes.
Um.
Also.
Yeah, it's just like you adopted in Select Board, rules and guidelines.
Um, do we want to give a public uh, comment period?
No.
Sarah?
I just had a question, when I was looking at it, did, did the, the thing about notifying people of the fee?
Yes.
Ahead of time?
Yes.
Fit in, okay, because the one I, the version I looked at didn't have that in?
Uh, yeah, there was a second version.
Second version, whatever.
And I did, mine came without an attachment, just the.
Oh.
Yeah, the second version.
The version, yeah, the, the revised version includes, so if someone is requesting records, and there is going to be a cost associated with it, because it'll take more than half an hour snap time, or they wanna make the, or whatever, then the person who's requesting it records will be told by the custodian, here's the charge. They have to request it and writing them, and here's the charge, and then they have to say yes for them to pay that, or they'll pay whatever the cost is associated with that.
Okay, that's what I wanted to just make sure.
Yeah, or there's a, I'm sorry, I wanna clarify that. They will give an estimate of the cost, but then the person has to agree they'll pay whatever the cost is. Except, yeah.
Okay.
Tabby, Tabby, I don't even know.
Tabby?
Right, yes, um, just in some of the uh, appendix B, some of the details, there are a couple of things that are not on there that I think may, um, maybe need to be, for example, you've got color photocopies at one particular price, computer-generated paper copies, my assumption is that means printing out a document or a P D F, and my assumption is that would be black and white, but often they need to be color, so, would that be considered a color photocopy, or, you know, there, a couple of refinements in there, plus occasionally, um, scanning out and using the wide format scanner to either scan and digitize uh, certain copies, or if a wide format copy needs to be made, that does not fit within anything that I see, um. It's a little bit more unusual, but it is needed, but something like that would definitely not be a twenty-five cent a page.
Then I, can I ask a question, Tab?
Sure, yeah.
Um, what would be the format, would that be a map, or like a plat or a survey, that would be a wide format?
More a septic file. So, septic generations I have in under zoning world, and or under um, health officer, depending on how you look at it, all of the pre-two thousand and seven zoning, excuse me, septic permits and files, many of which have the twenty-two by thirty-six inch blueprint size septic plans.
I, I would, I would put that under survey slash flat maps, and the existing charge of the town charges, it's a dollar that were paid for that. Is that, is that substantially different?
Well, um, when Andy makes a copy of a survey or a plat, if he's taking the plat and putting it on the copier, that of course does not fit, so that's sort of a multi, often a multi-page operation, or if I'm running the wide format scanner and digitizing that whole thing, that can be two pages, four pages, whatever, twenty-two by thirty-six, it does take time to do. Um, but also how that would be delivered. Whether it's delivered as a P D F or a file, I'm assuming we'd call that a media item, and then looking at a media item, is that one file digitally composed of multiple pages? Um.
Yes, that says per media, so I think it's per copy. And I think the only thing I would say here is that the, the survey plat map is actually a dollar per page, that's, I should have said that there. I, I, I mean, I, we can add, we can add that line, but I'm, we can make her heads explode. Try to get any money.
So.
Joe?
I, I totally agree, I think this is a step in the right direction.
Yeah.
Putting something in place. So I moved to vote, you know, I, the vote on this, we don't have to keep rehashing it. We can obviously relook at it and change it as needed.
Yes.
We need to put something in place. Instead of, uh, I don't, as a putting it to the public, um, it, it's a policy, just like the dump, we didn't, we didn't put out, you know, we changed all the fees to have the public come the next time, so I mean, I don't think it's, it's more welcome people can come to our meetings, it's on the agenda. So I believe we should just vote, I, I move to approve the draft of the uh, public records request draft policy, uh, what do you wanna call it? The kind of Dover. Public Record Inspection Copy and Transmission Policy, and we, anyone want to second it?
I will.
And questions?
Jim? Yeah, Jim?
On page two, second sentence, it says that custodian will promptly produce, should let three days to conform with.
Uh, where do you see that, Jim? Just.
Second sentence.
Second sentence. Yeah, if you look on the first page, promptly is defined as immediately with little or no delay, and not more than three business days, unless the town extends that period as provided under the policy. It's in the definition on the first page.
Well, shouldn't that read three days, even though you may have defined it? As people don't read everything.
We can, but I mean, defined terms are kind of, that's, where you don't repeat the thing, the same term over and over and over again. I, I take your point, but I think if it's defined, we're probably okay. I mean, unless someone feels we need to.
The thing about this is that now employees who are, are the in charge of these files and records have this to go by when they're asked.
Insistent.
Yes, and so everybody knows.
Everybody.
I mean, the thing is, the people aren't gonna respond to this document in isolation. If they come in for a request and say, well, I want it immediately, well, here, page one of the document says we have up to three days, so it's right there.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Right, I have a second question, I don't quite understand, on page five, transmission of public records. It says that custodian will not transmit a public record, I'm not quite sure what that means.
I think it, it, my, my understanding of that, um, is that we won't send the records somewhere else, if someone comes in, will you send them? Send the record to you, you know, we, we're not gonna take them out of the office and transmit them to someone. The public records, they stay here.
Well, I, I I would define transmit, you know, one of those electronically by mail.
We're not gonna, however we do it, we're not gonna send it out, you know, we can, we can.
I think that needs to be a way, you know.
Sarah, did you pull that from the state? From the V L C T language, so this is language that's been vetted at the state.
Hold on.
Now you may do it like, this is how the state says it should be done.
Joe?
For beating up something that's already used by other towns, and that is adopted by the V L C T utilized, I don't think Patrick did any real incredible changes to them, putting our custodials and doing that sort of thing. So.
We have a motion and a second, and any more comments? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you, Patrick.
Yeah, thank you very much, Jim.
Okay, now, under new business, we have, are asked to consider Juneteenth as a town holiday. So, does somebody want to speak to that? Jeanette?
Well, I can, uh, Abby had asked me to put this on the agenda, but.
Who did?
Uh, Tabby.
Okay.
Um, just to sort of recap, we currently have eleven day holidays, and two, including two floating holidays. Um, Juneteenth is a federal holiday in all fifty states, um, we did, Andy and I did a little research of other towns in Vermont. Um, so far, twenty-three Vermont towns are closed on June nineteenth, um, including Wilmington, Brattleboro, Vernon. Um, and fifteen that we know of are open, um, including Whiting, yeah, we have Warthorrow. Um, I know both Wilmington, this is their third year that they've put that, put that holiday in place. Brattleboro, this is their second year. Um, so.
Comments, Sarah?
Do we, are, so, the, the towns that are celebrating Juneteenth, are they also, they, so that gives them twelve holidays too, they're not short somewhere else.
Oh, I don't know what other, how many other towns, how many old holidays other town that?
Right.
That are town. But it would be twelve for us.
Was the proposal for, um, to have the holiday the day and a half? Like, two days from now, or for next year?
No, I know, and that's my question is, I mean, it's all two days away, so, are you gonna adopt it now, or make it effective in twenty twenty-six? I mean, that's, actually, I don't know.
Sarah?
Tabby won't, Tabby's not part of it.
Tabby wants to weigh in, or whatever.
She's going.
No, it was, no, I'm, I'm back. Somebody had asked me, and I did not know the answer, and then someone, a family member tried to schedule me for something, and I said, I think I'm working, but, you know, so I wasn't really sure which way we were going or considering to go, and was curious as to what some of our surrounding towns were doing. And again, is it a, it's a federal holiday on some levels, but
we're probably.
I just, I just wasn't sure, so I thought a little clarity would be helpful.
Jimmy?
What is a dollar cost for the town to give everybody a paid, another additional paid holiday?
I, I do not know. I would like to, my personally, I'd like to think about this and consider it, and maybe, um, look at the the holidays that other two towns around here have, and consider it, and I don't know, this is, this is the kind of holiday, I almost think that it may not always be a holiday going forward.
It's not for the next three years.
Yes.
It's a state holiday?
Yeah.
So, I mean, that was a great, so it was, it's a state holiday, it's a federal holiday, and then we actually have two floating holidays in addition to specified holidays.
Okay.
I think we need to think about it, and we'll, with you.
We have balanced and battle day, and I think, is it veteran's day? Yes, are the floats. Okay, everybody good with thinking about it? Uh, we weren't planning to have it, uh, I, in my mind, in two days.
Okay.
We have.
Great.
Okay. All right, anything else on that? Update, unfinished business, update on the town common well project. You have the floor, Jeanette, you want it?
Okay. So I sent you, I believe I sent you the tailwater engineering, um, report, there's also about a thirty-page, uh, source protection plan, which you're welcome to read through as well. Um, so both CAS, um, and Tailwater, they are working with Tailwater Engineering. Um, they've composed their construction permit documents and, uh, the source protection plan. The, uh, permit document outlines the connecting of the new well, reconfiguring the, the space, um, adding ore storage, disinfection, et cetera, that's needed. Um, they were submitted to the state, um, A N R and the public drinking water departments, um, earlier this month. Um, the state does have ninety days to review. So, it's possible we won't get an answer until, you know, at the latest end of August. Um, they did, uh, both the engineering firms did work with, uh, Cushing, who installed, um, the well. And, um, just a couple estimates that they have. Um, so activating the water system upgrades within the building will be approximately seventy-seven thousand five hundred. Um, the work outside the building to install wire conduits, clearing the paths, um, installing water line, abandoning the old well, costing around forty thousand. So we're looking at, um, on the high end, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand to get that taken care of, but we do have those funds that we did put aside, which is like a hundred and sixty-five thousand, so that's a good thing.
And that's before some things go wrong or get changed, or, yes, we have to blast this.
Yes, and sure, it's gonna be, all right, engineering costs involved, but. Um, but it's, you know, it's moving forward, so.
No, good job, I, this, this was, I, this is a very dry read, but, um.
I missed that, well, uh.
It's way over.
And, uh, a lot of redundant systems have to be included in this, it's.
That seems
It's gonna be, it's gonna be, at this rate, it's gonna be four hundred thousand dollars to put water into that building.
We've already invested a lot of it, so it's, to walk away from it would be like.
I, but, we really don't have a choice.
Well, and here's, unless you close the school.
It's all because there are children in that building.
Is there? Hold on, Joe, Sarah was speaking.
Yes.
Given that we're working on the water task force, and we might be running, is there something that, that are we spending money that we're going, that's going to become a redundancy, because we're gonna end up putting in a town water line possibly up to there, or?
I don't think we have the time to wait with the kid, with the daycare in there. Yeah, yes.
I, I would, I would, I would agree with that, I, I think that we're almost a year, just a little less than a year before the feasibility study, and we're probably years after that, for during, we don't know where the water will go. If, where, if the water will go.
Right. Okay.
And that'd be a source.
We could use it as a tribute to the town water system.
And as I look at what this is gonna cost, I can't even imagine what a water system possibly would get to, getting a water system.
Linda.
Putting a well.
Good question, this includes the town hall, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the building.
Yes, yes, so then people could actually use the water at the town hall, when they have, have a event, or, uh, yeah, and then we wouldn't be bought, there wouldn't be buying water, and so, yeah.
Can I ask one more question? And, and we don't know the answer, but maybe, so maybe it's what the city, do we know what too soon to know what the schools, the schools, the school district is staging in doing, terms in schools?
Like Dover School?
Yeah.
No, it's way too early tomorrow.
Totally early, and now, so that doesn't help answer the question.
No. I mean, we have the library, the daycare, and our function building for the, the town.
You said you have all the buildings that we have up there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think, I, I mean, they just signed the E P bill last night, so everybody needs to also process what's going on. Uh, I thought the most interesting thing was, the maximum message was a lot of a lot of gallons, they're counting the town hall for a hundred seats, of, yeah.
Everybody flushing the same.
Yeah, so.
Five hundred gallon tank.
Yeah.
Big water tanks, whole water.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much, Jeanette, for, for continuing to follow this, and you, you, you could be a water consulting specialist.
Watch yourself aside, Dave, all work.
Or, or, going through the process.
Thank you, what they give me.
No, thank you.
It's the task force.
Any other comments about the, the well situation? Okay, we need to go into the Board of Liquor Control.
I make a motion to go into the Board of Liquor Control.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Mike? Uh, I make a motion to approve the following licenses, subject to receipt of appropriate, the required documents and payments. First class license for O N D Hospitality, D B A Deer Hill Inn and Last Year Bar and Grill. Second class license for In-N-Out, D B A Tony's Pizza. Third class license for Last Year Bar and Grill. Outside consumption permits for One Mountain Park Plaza, L L C, D B A One M T N. Uh, Last Chair and Last Year Bar and Grill, and we're pressed to cater permit for W Y Foster, L L C, for Chamber Social at the In-N-Out Snow, scheduled for June twenty-fourth.
Somebody wants to, thank you, Dan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to come out?
I make a motion out of, out of, come out of, uh, Board of Liquor Control.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, the consent agenda, we have the minutes of June third and June twelfth, June thirths were, um, corrected by Jeanette. There was, she left the banner off, and then, and then, uh, did Leah want more stuff on her?
Had it some just some more specifics to her dissertation.
And.
But yes, they were corrected.
So we're, do we have the same people at both?
Let me.
Uh, Frederick, I'm here on the third.
Okay, all right, so make a motion to prove the minutes of, the amended motion, the amended minutes for June third, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to approve the minutes for June twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
Hold you one second.
Second.
Did you abstain from this?
I abstained from June third. Sorry, I should.
Sorry.
I second the motion regarding June twelfth.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and we also have the warrants from June seventh, in the amount of two hundred thirty-seven. All right, and we also have the warrants from June seventh in the amount of two hundred thirty-seven thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty-four cents.
I make a motion to approve the warrants of June seventh for two hundred thirty-seven thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty-four cents.
Second.
All in favor? FYI, tax sale on June seventeenth, ten AM at the town office.
Is that purchased a nice piece of property?
We did.
You did.
Yes, what did we get?
Uh, one twenty-nine to Fbrook, the what's left over from the buyer.
Oh.
Uh, the amount of three thousand two hundred eighty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents.
Is that the only one that actually went to tax sale?
No.
No, there was four that we.
Did they all go? And they were, were purchased by others. Okay, thanks for that update, we have the stormwater master planning community meeting for June eighteenth, six PM. Which is tomorrow night on Zoom.
Yes, and the details are on the website, on the town website, um.
So the, that, that firm that came down and did the stormwater kind of survey, we didn't uh, uh, ask them to do that, did we?
No, to do the.
Yeah, to do the survey. I just was curious.
Tabby's trying to say something.
Tabby.
Yeah, no, the state has been uh promoting the whole stormwater survey and they came down, they, the state paid for this. We did not pay any money for this, but this will, at least the survey and the community plan will help get us. Addressing those things that truly need to be done, and uh, so we did not reach out to ask for this. The state came to us and say, we're one of the targeted towns to have it reviewed.
So is there grant money for this kind of thing?
Um, I am not sure if there is grant money for us at the tail end of thing to do anything. Um, but this review project has been paid for under some state grant. We did not have to apply for a grant for this.
And I thought I read on it that it wasn't mandatory. In the, in that document. That we do these, but they're not required.
It is not required, it is, it is a recommendation with details of what needs to be done. Getting onto this review before the state mandates everything in about three years. Gives us the opportunity to plan and get ahead for what may need to be done, but it, within a couple of years, the state is going to mandate. All of this remediation.
So we have top eighteen, and so eight, we would have to do eighteen of these projects?
Um, I don't think we have to do eighteen of the projects, I think that was just their criteria of selecting. The most important ones to look at by order of, um, you know, immediacy. What are things that are endangering or endangering property and some other things, just as they went down. There was originally thirty-five on the list and they tightened it down to the, just the top eighteen. As far as what we would want to look at first, I do have the full list of thirty-five if anybody wants to review that.
Uh, that, the problem is we don't have any money built into anything for all these projects.
We don't know yet what any of this may cost, but we will have an idea of what would need to be done and then how to budget and price it in the future. Before the state comes down and says, you must do this now or else, so we're getting the information to be able to plan.
So you're saying that they're going to require towns to do these projects on private property? And the town is going to be on the hook for the.
I'm not saying any of that, I'm saying that the town, the state is going to mandate.
Confused by the way you're, you're mandating, mandate, where does the money come from?
There, there's.
There is no money.
Oh, they may make the individual property owners have to pay.
That is a possibility, yeah.
There are several town pri, priority projects on there.
I'd say come join the meeting tomorrow night because you'll be able to get all of that detailed information as it relates to each project.
I am planning on attending.
Terrific.
Okay, any other questions about that? We have employee evaluations on Friday morning, June twentieth, bright and early, eight AM, starting out with Chief Arbor Gas. Playing commission, June twenty-third, six thirty PM, Dover Water Task Force, June twenty-fifth, at five PM. And first summer concert, June twenty-ninth at two PM in the park. Okay, anything else, any liaison reports? Uh, we need to go.
Well, the only thing I didn't, I didn't bring up is that we should think about, like we did last summer, only having one meeting in July and August. So just on the next agenda, we can discuss that. Correct, so that we can make. Aware that that would be perceived, we did it last year, it seemed to work out all right, I believe we could probably do it again.
Did we miss both months, we only did one meeting each month, I thought we skipped.
I think it was just too long, I, but.
Less meetings, less cost.
Is that, it's, oh, really, Joe, really? I mean. Most department, either, you know, they can adjust their hours and not work for long, or they're on salary. Um, and I, you just don't know when stuff is going to come up.
I agree.
And, and it should, it should be, can we get our job done in one meeting? And, and then, but I think that the money thing is, is not the way we should look at it, it should be, do we need to meet?
I, I'm not gonna, you can, you can decide on whatever way, I mean, we should always be fiduciary responsible to our taxpayers. To do things at the best cost possible and get things done in the most efficient way.
But remember, we just got a big raise, we.
Uh, and we have a lot of stuff going on and all these other things that we have to keep abreast of too, so I think it's a merit. Raise to the situation of things that are going on right now.
Sarah. Um, I was going to say, uh, I, I'm more comfortable with the idea of planning on two and canceling one if we find that we're in. Solid position to do it, rather than planning on one and then potentially having to re-up the second one. Because we find that we have things we have to address. And I think that's fair, more fair to the, to the general public too, to, to have it, it's easier to, it's easier to not come to something. Strangle to get to something.
See, and July has five Tuesdays.
Right.
So, Jeanette.
Um, I believe last year, because the fourth was a day earlier. I don't think we met at the first meeting of July.
Right.
But I know that I have, we have the bridge repair request for bridge is due for the July first meeting. And the heating oil bids are due for July fifteenth meeting.
So like we're doing it two, but you get an extra Tuesday because it's a five Tuesday month. So that's like a vacation.
You left two weeks off in between those meetings, that is great.
Thank you for your thoughts on that, and Will, we can, sounds like the July is going to be too, yes.
I think maybe August, that, yeah, should.
Okay. So we need to go into executive session with personnel, uh, the chairman's employee review. Because she's kind of busy on the twentieth, yeah, so thank you all for coming. Sarah, Sarah's going to excuse herself.
Because of.
Because of a conflict.
Are you going to make a motion to go into that thing session?
Yeah, just said, Sarah. Sarah Shippy is leaving now, you can note that down at six, uh, seven-ten. Uh, somebody want to make a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
All in favor?